Good evening. It is 5:45, so I will call to order the July 10, 2024, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll rise, please. You'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country and to the business of its own. Thank you. You may be seated. We start with public comment time. We have one, two, three, four, five people who have signed up in person. Is there anyone online seeking recognition wishing to speak during general public comment time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. In that case, we would give each individual up to three minutes, and we will start with Chris Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, City Council. Appreciate everything you guys do. I know you guys have lots of other objectives and things on the agenda that's more important than this, but on number eight on the agenda, we have new business for valet parking consideration in downtown Main Street. As we all know, valet park, as we all know, Main Street on downtown has been, you know, mixed reviews. There's a lot of, you know, things that can be better, things that we can do to improve altogether, as far as like the technology and stuff in that nature and finding spaces. But we would love, you know, the approved idea for valet parking on Main Street to help with that. Valet parking is a benefit to the citizens of Hendersonville and the tourism that comes into town that doesn't know how to use the parking app or is having trouble trying to use the kiosks. We can find a designated area where folks can just pull up and valet park, and the valet attendant takes that vehicle off-site or nearby to a designated location, and then that Patreon can enjoy downtown and not have to hassle and worry about parking. And then they're able to retrieve their vehicle wherever they're at on Main Street. There's technology aspects, you know, that in given time, once you guys approve, you know, the review of consideration to look for an ordinance of valet parking, there's ways that through downtown, we can deliver the car anywhere they're at. So it's a huge benefit. If you guys don't know already, we have had a venue in downtown that's had weddings and parties and stuff in that nature, anniversaries, and have had about 250 to 300 people attend that venue. We have had parked, we've had the opportunity in rain, sunshine, park vehicles over, you know, 100 vehicles at a time and have folks, you know, attend that venue in downtown. We've done it off private properties, two private properties, right? But that is, can be something that we can do on Main Street, a designated area where it can be a new revenue streamline that you guys didn't think about, that can help with taxpayer dollars, as you can tax that valet operator for those parking spaces or for that per car or for that, you know, session for that unloading and loading zone. And we all know that the demographics here are over 55, so it's a very big benefit where you can just pull up, be greeted by a valet attendant that says, "Welcome to the city of Hendersonville. We'll take your vehicle for you," and then you can go dine wherever you need to dine. And whenever you need your vehicle, this is your claim check, you present your claim check, and we bring your vehicle right back here to you. So it's a big benefit, plus you have all the parking ordinances in place right now. The only thing that's missing is a valet parking ordinance, and that finalizes your parking ordinances in general. Thank you, guys, for your time and hope for the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Lynn Williams?
Evening. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. I just wanted to make the announcement about the bridge dedication ceremony for local hero and fallen deputy Ryan Hendricks. It's going to be 9:00 a.m. Thursday, this July 18, and it'll be in front of the sheriff's office in Hendersonville. Thank you.
Thank you. Eda Robinson?
Mayor Volk, councilmen and women, and to the people of Henderson County. On Sunday, June 16, God called one of His own home to receive her reward. Crystal Felicia Colly was a mother, a daughter, a sister, a niece, a best friend, an acquaintance, a board member, a caregiver, a massage therapist, a doula, a substitute teacher, a historian, but most of all, she was a woman of God. She was an activist for all people with a vision to see all people become aware of who they are and the legacy that brought them to where they are. I could say so much more about Crystal, my sweet niece, but I stand here today to thank Mayor Volk and the people of Henderson County and surrounding counties for the love, kind words, cars, monetary gifts, and all of your support. And all of your support to the Colly family. Your loving kindness will always be remembered. The word of God says, "What you done to the least of these, you have done to me." So I just pray God's blessing upon each and every one of you for reaching out to our family. God bless you.
Thank you. I had it down a little later, but this would be an appropriate time to have a moment of silence and reflection in honor of Crystal. Thank you. Okay. Next is Chipley Mecklenburg.
I just have two topics, and Jill has given me my homework to do because I had no time or knowledge of what to research before I brought them up. But one is the trees. The All-America Tree City signs are gone, we know, because apparently they've been too many trees cut. And there is replanting, I'm told by Jill, but I don't know where or how many, and neither did she, really. And I don't know who does know, but I'll contact the Tree City, the tree group about that that she referred me to. The other one is medical. This system is overburdened, and I know that's not your field. I don't know who controls it, but it's on the point of breaking. I can tell you, I got a referral to a neurologist in February. Two months later, they called me and made an appointment for two months out, which they canceled and put in the end of November. Well, when I called back to try to get something else, the lady that helped me said that we have 300 referrals a week. That's not a month, it's a week, and that's a quote. That's 15,000 people making new patient appointments at that office in a year. I don't know where they send them, but I'm sure they don't do 15,000 people a year. That's a population of Hendersonville proper, approximately. So it's not your job, I know, but I don't know who to contact or if you do. It's really kind of on the breaking point, and I will say, my friend had a similar experience at the emergency room where she was held out, held for some, as men, I don't know, up to 12 hours, and they couldn't take her. Eventually, her husband drove her to home and got her to a doctor. But they have a thing that's an agreement to take the overflow or whatever you want to call it, and they can't turn patients away, and they're overburdened, too. So that's kind of something that if anybody has any idea who does that sort of thing before it breaks, that would be good. And thank you all.
Okay, thank you. The Tree Board is working with a variety of replantings, and do you want to say anything about that?
I do. We still have our Tree City designation. We have not lost that. I know there have been a lot of trees removed with NC DOT's work on Highway 64. That could be, there was quite a few trees at one time, which was a little alarming. But the city, in addition to the Tree Board and the work that they're doing through like the Neighborhoods Program, we did just establish a tree canopy ordinance that will hopefully help increase our tree canopy. So we are still doing things, and we have not lost our designation yet.
And I can understand about the medical. In April, I called for an eye doctor's appointment, and it is scheduled for March of 2025. All right, Dan Mecklenburg. Wish to speak?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. First item of business is a consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have from this evening's agenda?
Madam Mayor, I was wondering if we could pull item I off for discussion, a change order for a bar?
Okay, well, that'd be part of the consent agenda.
Sorry, thought we were doing the agenda first.
The regular agenda first.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
I'll wait. I do this every time, I think.
Okay.
Maybe one day I'll learn.
Any, anything, or if not a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion. I move that City Council approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and the agenda has been approved. Consent agenda. Now, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Yes?
Me again.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could move item I off of the consent agenda and have it under new business or discussions?
New business.
That would be okay?
Yeah, new business.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone would like to have moved to the regular agenda? Not a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the consent agenda items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Okay, got that. Presentations. Mr. Holloway, you going to do introduction here?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our newest employee in the Community Development Department, Mr. Sam Hayes is our new planner, too, and I'll give Sam an opportunity to tell you a little bit about his background.
Hello, City Council. I just graduated from UNC Chapel Hill's City and Regional Planning Program. Prior to that, I lived in Hendersonville for two years. I served on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I fell in love with the city of Hendersonville. And so I'm really excited and honored to be here, working with the Community Development Department. Thank you all.
We're excited to have Sam on board. He has hit the ground running. He's been with us for about a month and a half. He's already been presenting to our boards and doing all the work that we would expect a planner to be doing, so we're grateful to have him.
And I understand you've been tasked with working on recognition of A.B. Edwards Park.
Yes, we just discussed that this morning.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Right, public hearings. The public hearing that was advertised is a rezoning, a conditional zoning district, Felicia Reeves' home that will not be discussed, but we will have the original presentation and open the public hearing, and then we will postpone it. Is there anything you want to say before we do that?
Tyler, come on up. I think, Mayor, if it's okay, the planning, community development staff would like just open the public hearing, withhold any presentation the next month.
Okay. Is there anything you wanted to mention to start with otherwise?
No, not really. I mean, I think the main thing was just kind of going through kind of what the deferral is, why we're doing it this way, because this is a little bit different than normal. So we did receive a request to defer this public hearing to August from the applicant. She's actually in Washington, D.C. right now, advocating for veterans, so she couldn't be here tonight. However, the request for deferral came after we'd already started the required statutory noticing, so it had already run in the paper once. We'd sent out the letters that morning before we had known about it. So in order, instead of trying to confuse people by sending, oh, the more letters, we just wanted to make it clear in the agenda that they are asking for deferral and then still bring it to City Council as normal.
Okay. Any questions about that process? All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
So we will open this public hearing, and if someone would move to continue it?
Madam Mayor, I move that we continue this public hearing to our August 1 City Council meeting.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of continuing the public hearing to the August 1 council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and we will take it up then. Thank you. All right, next, Gen H Comprehensive Plan presentation.
So I just have a few comments, promise not to be long, but want to take the opportunity to introduce the significance of the public hearing that we're holding this evening for the Gen H Comprehensive Plan. This process really began back in '22 when we started the development of an RFP to identify consultant to assist us in this process, and throughout that, we have had a tremendous amount of engagement from our city staff, from city council, and from the community at large. We have been very fortunate to, throughout the development of the plan itself and the development of the implementation strategies and all of the things that our dear friends from Bolton and Mink are going to talk with you about this evening, to have city staff really lean into providing feedback to our team and developing what we think is reflective of their interests and their insights. That interest and engagement, we have also seen from you on council, and that has been inspiring, and we are grateful for that and believe that it reflects very positively on the thoughtful process that we've used to engage this rather audacious effort to have a community conversation about our vision for Hendersonville's future. And lastly, but most importantly, the interest and engagement that we've received from the community at large has been very invigorating for the team and for our planning staff, and I think that we will continue to see that this evening, and we are also very grateful for that. So without further ado, I will introduce Grant Miachi and Lorna Allen. Lorna will be presenting first to walk us through an overview of what we have been involved in here over the last year or so. Thanks.
Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city representatives, and members of the public. Thank you all for joining us this evening. My name is Lorna Allen. I am with Bolton and Mink. We were the fortunate consultants to be able to work with y'all's great community to develop this plan. I'm joined tonight by my colleague, Grant Miachi, and online, we have Ben Hitchings as well. So without further ado, we're going to go over a brief overview of what we've been up to over this past year, as well as kind of outline some of the key highlights of the plan, but we have shared this presentation with you all before at length, so we're going to kind of keep it a little high level tonight so we can get to the public hearing. So first and foremost, we have really focused this presentation tonight on the draft plan that came out in May. So we want to focus on the purpose of the plan and why we plan for communities, the process of how the plan was developed, and the content, or the key components of those plans. And then I will hand it over to staff to talk about next steps and some of the feedback that they have been gathering from various boards. So as we all know, Hendersonville is a very, very desirable community, and we know that growth and development is changing Hendersonville. So we also understand that under the city's legal framework, that property owners have existing rights to develop their land. This is not a process that we can necessarily halt, but we can use tools like a comprehensive plan to help shape that. This is why the city has engaged in this planning process and through a very extensive public outreach process. I believe Lou may have undersold it. The staff has done quite a tremendous job in engaging with the community, some of the best efforts that I've seen in my professional career, to try and reach as many constituents as possible, and this has resulted in the Gen H plan, the draft of that plan. And it really describes a shared vision for the future. It lays out a plan to advance it on the ground for years to come, and it also equips this community to better manage change that is coming, but not to be reactive, but to be proactive in that. So we have been working on this plan with the city staff, you all, the community, for over 12 months. This plan has consisted of four of those phases to really allow us to dive into some deeper issues with the city leadership and staff and community stakeholders. Throughout this process, vision and goals have been defined and developed into a framework that will guide future growth and conservation in Hendersonville. As those ideas and recommendations started to begin to crystallize for the plan, an implementation strategy was developed, and that was developed with the guidance and insight of the city manager and his staff, as well as input from our community advisory committee and others. So really, we're here tonight for the public hearing, for the adoption phase, that final phase of this process, to hear from the community so that we can have that final kind of opportunity to hear back and get that engagement for the plan's final development. I mentioned that staff has been really hitting the pavement to get out there and have various opportunities and ways of engaging stakeholders, really across the community, giving opportunities for people to engage and really discuss the future of the vision, their vision for the community and how they see Hendersonville progressing over the next years. And we really feel, I think, as a team, staff and consultant team, that we can see the fingerprints of the community in this plan, and it's evident in the development through the Gen H plan. When the draft was released, the draft was available online as well as in some city community facilities, and city staff has really been gathering input from stakeholders, boards, other staff across the city, and yourselves, to ensure that revisions to the final version of the plan are truly reflective of the community's vision, and we will be gathering more input tonight as we listen in. Comments shared on the draft plan in the survey, those are available on the city's website. If anyone here happens to use the QR code, you can look at that now, but those are all available, and we can say that we have seen increased engagement from certain groups within the community, even more so from the onset of our first initial survey. One thing I just want to highlight, because this is a question that we get when we ask who's actually taking the survey, and we can say that over a third of the stakeholders who participated in the survey for the draft plan feedback identified as being city of Hendersonville residents. Just want to highlight that, but also note that the city of Hendersonville does serve a larger area, so people do feel like, maybe they don't live inside the city, they do feel that the city is their city. So just wanted to note that there is a variety of constituents that have provided feedback. So the content of the plan, it is comprised of six chapters. The first three chapters really outline the how and why we plan, how the plan was developed, and really kind of a snapshot of where Hendersonville is today. However, the last three chapters, four, five, and six, outline the goals, the vision, focus areas that we kind of looked at a little bit more detail on. There is a downtown-focused plan, part of this plan, that includes design guidelines that will support character, maintaining character, but also setting expectations for the future and how the community may develop. And then last but not least, is really that implementation plan of how you are going to get from day one to achieving the recommendations and the vision and the goals of this plan. So with that, this plan does have a very strong vision statement that is very reflective of the engagement and the guidance from stakeholders in the community, as well as these outlining goals that identify who Hendersonville desires to be, who Hendersonville sees themselves as for the future, and each of these goals have objectives that align with, under them. Those goals align with the future for Hendersonville, and that is depicted in a future development pattern that is very heavily focused on character and the goals that were expressed by the community. We'll get into a little bit more detail in that in a moment. But how that plan was developed was really looking at what's existing here in Hendersonville today, the colors that represent different types of land uses that are existing on the ground today, but also looking at committed development, development that is happening now, as well as land that is undeveloped or vacant at this time. From there, we went on to understand what we call a land supply, and that is to identify what's currently developed, what should be protected, like our floodplains and our culturally and environmentally sensitive areas, thinking through what is underutilized, meaning if it's aging out or underdeveloped, and then developing what is called a land supply, sorry, a land supply map that encompasses just under 4,000 acres, which is roughly half the land in the city and the ETJ. So when, starting from that base, asking those questions of what are the community's expectations and aspirations, what will the market support, and what is on the ground today, what are those existing conditions telling us? So that starts to inform the future land use for the community. But we have to understand that all land, there is a trade-off, and that land supply may support various uses, where residential may be an ideal use, commercial may be as well, or commercial and industrial. So understanding where different types of land uses would be best supported based on different inputs. Also, understanding y'all's population growth over time. You've seen a few spikes, but not so many as noticeable as in 2020, and that gets back to my former statement about Hendersonville being a very desirable community and the secret getting out in 2020 with your spike in growth. And we know that growth is happening, so as we think about that, we have a trade-off, a decision to make. If we continue in a growth pattern where we continue kind of growing on easy-to-develop vacant land, pushing further and further out, or... a land supply map that encompasses just under 4,000 acres, which is roughly half the land in the city and the ETJ. So when starting from that that base, asking those questions of what are the community's expectations and aspirations, what will the market support, and what is on the ground today, what are those existing conditions telling us? So that starts to inform the future land use for the community. But we have to understand that all land, there is a trade-off, and that land supply may support various uses. Where residential may be an ideal use, commercial may be as well, or commercial and industrial. So understanding where different types of land uses would be best supported based on different inputs. Also, understanding y'all's population growth over time. You've seen a few spikes, but not so many as noticeable as in 2020. And that gets back to my former statement about Hendersonville being a very desirable community and the secret getting out in 2020 with your spike in growth. And we know that growth is happening. So as we think about that, we have a trade-off, a decision to make. If we continue in a growth pattern where we continue kind of growing on easy-to-develop, vacant land, pushing further and further out, or do we focus in areas that we already have infrastructure? We stay out of environmental, agricultural, and culturally sensitive areas? What does that look like? So there's a decision, a crossroad. Do we follow the trend as we continue to push out, which could devalue and hollow out some of our centered areas? Or do we focus that growth in areas that we already have available infrastructure? So those were the questions, those were the trade-offs. So if I was to liken this to a kind of analogy, we could look at an apple orchard and look at a field that is experiencing old field succession. So passive, being passive about it. Or with the alternative, we can consider selective pruning, being proactive, focusing growth development in key locations, preserving locations that we we want to preserve. With that, I'm going to allow Grant to get into a little bit more detail with our vision map.
Thank you all. So as we as we look into the vision map, you can start to see how we've taken a land use map, and really through the use of character areas, start to expand how you understand the interconnectedness of both land use, transportation, and character to create and preserve the areas that you want to preserve, but also allow that growth to be focused in areas that have infrastructure. So if you look and understand the 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 vision map, you can think about it in kind of four buckets, right? You have character areas that are focused on open space, character areas that are focused on employment, right? So areas where more jobs and employment areas might be located, living, so residential areas of various types, and activity centers where all these things kind of mix together. So if you take a look at the at the, make sure I got the right one there, if we dig into each one of these buckets, you can look at at some of the percentages as a whole of both the ETJ and the extended study area and the and the city limits proper. In an open space, which is really about 19% of that total area, an open space is really three different kind of character areas, those that we know that are regulated and controlled, some are existing parks and recreation areas, and other are conservation areas as well. So a lot of that tends to follow the flood plain and the stream corridors and things like that are protected, but not not specifically. If we could look at living, living in almost every city, right, is the largest percentage of land area that you have, right? So in this case, it's about 56% of that total land area. And that's a range really from rural residential, so lower densities, to multi-generational, which tends to get a little bit higher density. So that mix of 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 traditional, larger lots, lower densities in the greens, up to the multi-generational, which tends to include missing middle housing and single-family housing on smaller lots as well. If you take a look at employment, you can start to see that starts to cluster, right? Starts to cluster around around larger institutions. There might be areas where we've planned where mixed-use employment may occur, right? So where where people may be able to live and work in in close proximity. That's about 15% of the study area as well. And then activity areas, right? So these are our highest intensity areas. So if you start to see that, and if you if you squint at the vision map as you've looked before, that really starts to show where that those mixes and mix of uses occur, right? So your highest intensity uses are frankly on the smallest percentage of your of your of your land area in your city. And that allows you to create that trade-off that Lorna mentioned a little earlier about what you want to conserve and what you want to promote in terms of accommodate in terms of growth as well. So in order to test some of these things, we really took a look at some specific areas in a focus area. And in the plan, there's some there's some some great drawings, and there's some very specific drawings. There's a million different ways, or there's a one in 1,000 possibilities of how those things play out, right? But the idea of showing a picture of the future allows you to see how some of these goals and and policies and recommendations start to come together to create great places. So we looked at at five different focus areas around downtown, Western Acuasta, Blue Ridge Mall, Spartanburg Highway. So those areas, as Lorna mentioned, that have existing infrastructure, maybe are at an age where the where the land use will change, what could that be in the future? So these are these are simply really ways to illustrate how, at least one illustration of how these places might develop if you use the policies and recommendations as guidance in this plan as well. So and it's really, like I said, these can the idea of creating people, places is important. So showing how abstract policy can transform areas was really important for us as well. One unusual portion of this plan is we went really deep into downtown, right? So normally, communities might do a separate downtown plan, and a very high-level thought on on downtown may be in a comprehensive plan. We actually kind of merged both of those together. So you have a much more detailed plan for downtown than you do in other areas. And that downtown really isn't a homogenous, homogeneous environment as well. So we really took that into character districts. So how does the lower trailhead around the Acuasta differ from Seventh Avenue? Because they're not the same types of places as well. So along with that are a set of design guidelines. This is kind of a premonition forward to to the types of decisions and guidelines that you will have to make when you update your development ordinance to be able to align with the concepts in this plan as well. So this gives you some very specific guidance on how to preserve the great character of downtown. And, you know, as a longtime North Carolina resident, being able to work in with you all specifically on downtown Hendersonville, which is like the top of the top of Main Street communities, is is important. So having being able to develop design guidelines to help preserve that, but allow it to change and evolve over time with balancing the character and history that it has was was a great honor. So there's a set of design guidelines in there. That's very unusual for for comprehensive plans to have in there, but the importance of downtown is important to the 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 history and moving forward that you have in the future. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ben to talk a little bit about how the plan moves from words and pictures to action. So Ben is online if he can talk.
Great. Thanks so much, Grant. I'm Ben Hitchings, the principal with Green Heron Planning, part of our consulting team working with the city. And so we've done all this work together with the community and with the staff of the city to prepare this plan. Now we want to position the city to be able to move effectively from planning to implementation and begin realizing the vision of the plan on the ground in the years ahead. And so we've got three main components to help us do that that are embedded in the plan. These all are described in Chapter Six. We talked a lot about them in our work session that we had with y'all back at the end of May. And the first one is an implementation strategy, seven different key things that we're trying to accomplish. So you see a couple of examples here on the slide, connecting people to the great outdoors and transforming gateways and corridors. So we have the 10 goals that Lorna described that describe the future state of the community that we want to achieve, vibrant neighborhoods, authentic community character and the like. And this implementation strategy describes sort of mechanisms, broad, high-level mechanisms for getting there. Then, to support that implementation strategy, we have a whole portfolio of specific implementation projects. So these are things like implementing the top recommendations in the newly developing affordable housing strategic plan, or creating a unified development ordinance that brings the city's development standards all together in one document, and updating it to reflect the updated vision in the Gen H plan. So there altogether are 77 different implementation projects described in the plan. That is years, if not decades, of work for the city. And so we also worked with the city to identify a subset of those, and we'll talk about those in a minute. And then the third element that's in the plan to help facilitate implementation is a set of five operational strategies. These are things that you as a city council, that upper management in the city and other community leaders can all reinforce, like using the plan as a touchstone for community and private decision-making. So those operational strategies are things to always remember and reinforce in the years ahead so that the plan remains a central tool for you as you work to advance the vision on the ground. Next slide, please. The other thing that we have that exists, will exist outside the plan, is a set of a pool, really a pool of short-term implementation projects. All of the projects that are described in this table of short-term projects are drawn from that list of 77 projects that are in the plan. But clearly, we need an opportunity to bring some focus and direction for staff on which projects they might work on first to begin implementing the plan vision. And so that short-term project table is a pool of 34 projects to draw from in advancing the vision and getting things started in terms of of plan implementation. So together, the three elements of the plan paired with the short-term project list that will exist outside the plan, because it's more of a tool for that needs to be updated regularly as staff develops more information about each implementation project. Together, those things create a system for you for really moving smoothly and effectively from planning to implementation, so you can advance this vision and make Hendersonville an even better place in the years ahead. And let's see, turn it back to Lorna, Grant, and Lou.
Or Matt.
Or Matt. Yes, Matt. Sorry, I can't see anyone.
This is a fine handoff. So yeah, next steps after tonight, after we have our public hearing, after any deliberations and direction from city council, then we will be giving our final round of feedback to the consultants, and they will begin working on a revised final draft that will then be presented back to you next month at your meeting on August 1st, at which point it would be considered for formal adoption. And then, that's when the fun really begins, because we start implementing the plan. Before I go to my next thing, one thing I want to say, Grant mentioned that the level of detail that we went into for downtown, that was specifically made available through grant funds given to the city by TDA. So I want to acknowledge their role and that we're grateful for that contribution so that we were able to do that. And then, are there any questions, you know, technical questions or anything in the presentation from the consultants that you want to direct towards them before I continue?
Did we figure out the difference in the amount of the land supply that's in the city versus the ETJ?
Is that a yes?
I think it is a yes.
Yeah.
You mean, you don't have all these numbers memorized?
The land supply in the whole, the whole city limits, ETJ and the expanded area, that was around 5,900 acres. Land supply just in the city limits in ETJ is around 3,800, rounding down and up by a few.
Say that again.
Around 30, 3,800, 3,800. Within the city limits, 1,800. And ETJ only, 2,000. And then the expanded area, right around 2,000 as well.
So about what I expected. Thank you.
Can somebody make us a map or a chart of that, or one of those circles with the eyes? Yeah.
We can certainly do that. Yeah.
Great question. We will get better clarity on that and make sure that that information is presented in a way that's very useful, potentially breaking out the vacant versus the underutilized as well, because there is a distinction there in terms of developability and redevelopability. So we've got that on our list of revisions. Any other questions?
Sorry. I think we were also wondering several times, what percentage, or if there was a number of value of land that is actually in floodway and floodplain in comparison to the underutilized or undeveloped land? Like, how much of that is actually essentially undevelopable land, or that did not be developed?
Another great point. So that is also feedback that's been provided that will be in the final revised. Put that putting the floodplain layer over top of this and then understanding what percentage of land. And it may not be, you know, a portion of a parcel may be constrained, but the entire parcel may not be. So one portion of that's more likely to be able to have some development and other portions not. So we want to be able to understand that. Go ahead, Lorna.
And I'll just add, these graphics were developed in advance of that question and in advance of the final vision map, which does take into account floodplain and as we relate to the character areas. So as far as a specific acreage and percentage tonight, I cannot give you that. I haven't gotten that number completed, but it will be part of the revisions with the plan.
Thank you.
When when will we get the revision?
It is intended to be in your packet for next, the next city council meeting.
So week before.
Week before.
Okay.
It's a tight turnaround for everybody. And it is, you know, and then the presentation at next council meeting will be focused on those things that were revised, more substantial types of changes. So it'll be, we're getting drilling down, so you don't you wouldn't have to read reread the entire plan. We'll be able to highlight the the primary areas that were revised. Okay, any other questions? Okay. The main thing I wanted to bring to your attention are the recommendations from your appointed boards. So we did bring this to the planning board back in late June. Prior to that, we took it to the long-range planning committee of the planning board. They all got printed copies, and we went through it in great detail, you know, page by page through Chapter Four in particular. And so that that committee was well-versed with the plan. We also brought it to the full planning board, June 24th. The consultants gave a very detailed presentation of the plan, and there was a public hearing held, and planning board deliberated on the plan. And they recommended approval to city council, for city council to approve the plan. They did provide some specific considerations for you in terms of potential revisions, adding clarification around jurisdictions in some of the maps, clarifying what exactly are we do we mean when we talk about affordable housing? do we mean when we talk about affordable housing? We believe y'all are well-versed in, in how that can mean different things. Making sure that maps and illustrations that readers are able to easily orient themselves. And so, calling out landmarks and making sure road names are legible. Looking specifically around the, the character areas around Party Hospital, the institutional designation, and, and putting a keen interest and attention into that area, making sure that we are sensitive to existing residents in that area. Look for ways to just streamline the document. It is not light reading. And so, that's some advisement to look for ways to try to streamline the document if possible. And then, taking a look at some of the photo examples, making sure they're relevant to Hendersonville. One thing that we've talked about on that front is, you know, if it says, you know, this is from New York City, people are going to say, well, that's, you know, this is Hendersonville. What's a photo? There's not any pictures of New York City. But you can get hung up on where the picture was taken and not necessarily what the content of the photo is trying to convey. That is relevant. So, so we've talked about some strategies related to that. Unless there's really some specific photos that are, that are not conveying the information that we wanted to convey, we don't know that we'll necessarily be changing out photos as much as kind of addressing some of the captioning. But that's a staff kind of response to that recommendation. The downtown advisory board chomped on this for their last two meetings. We went through chapter five in detail, the downtown master plan. Councilman Miller was lucky enough to be there last night as we went through in the minutia of the, the design guidelines, and had a really interesting conversation about height, primarily height limits for buildings. And so, that board made a recommendation for approval. They're, again, specifically looking at chapter five, not the entire, not the entire plan. And then they had some recommendations related to clarity around the height limits that are being proposed. And so, I've got some illustrations here. It's, it is, it's a bit wordy, but essentially, for buildings and lots that front Main Street within the historic district, that those, the first half of those lots, those lots are primarily 100 feet deep, so the first 50 feet towards the alley, the, the front half, would be limited to 40 feet in height, which would be compatible with the historic character of Main Street. And it would retain that feel that we have today. The back half of those buildings would be allowed to step up one story. So you would have a step up on the, the back half, which would be the 50 feet to the alley. Beyond that area, so that would be, the yellow is the front half on the, on the illustration, and the, the red is the back half. Beyond that, beyond the alleys and beyond the historic district, in the area that's pink on the lower map, that is recommended to be a height limit of 64 feet. And then, the orange would stay the same as a recommendation for 40 feet. And so, really looking at basically an exception for the, to be intentional about the experience that you retain on Main Street. They also recommended revisiting or reevaluating the 64-foot height limit as needed at some point in the future. We know that's, there is an area that's hatched in the map on the bottom right, that a local bill establishes the, the height limitation of 64 feet. And so, to revisit that would be, you know, require a legislative act. They wanted that mentioned. And then, the final point was about making sure that the, the incorporation of the design standards that are in this, that are recommended in this plan, putting, codifying them, putting them into our code of ordinances, that that be a priority. And it is on the short-term implementation project list, so there's no real action or revision that's needed there. But they wanted to make sure that that was clear, that it is made a priority.
Matt?
Yes.
For the sake of everyone here, 64 feet, how many stories is that? Is there a building that you can give me in town that would be an example?
Yes, roughly five stories on average, and two great examples are on the, the north end of Main Street with the bank and the Skyland building.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, it is now time to kind of turn it over to the public hearing. Thank you.
Anyone have any more questions for staff or the consultants before we open public hearing? We have 10 people who have signed up here this evening. Is there anyone online who would be seeking recognition for speaking?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we will limit presentations by the public to five minutes apiece. That'll give us just under an hour. And what, what we want is to hear your opinions, your things you would like to see change, things that you like. We may not be able to answer questions, but they will all be noted, and we will do the best we can to see that people's opinions are taken into consideration this final, final draft. All right. So again, if you will come forward, give your address, your name and your address for the clerk's record. First is Ken Fitch. Ken?
Mayor. Mayor, can we open the public hearing?
Oh, sorry about that. I just jumped right in here. Yes, Madam Clerk has this public hearing denigrated in accordance with general status.
Yes, it has.
And we will open the public hearing. Thank you for keeping me straight. I'm just excited. Okay.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. I haven't timed this, it may be more than five. If so, I'll have to come back another time. Okay. Good evening. Soon, you will be asked to make one of the most important decisions of your lives. As to what you decide will determine the future of the city, but more directly impact the lives of the people who live and work here, and their children, and grandchildren. You have before you a 400-page document, 400 pages, that very few have read. It contains a trove of information, plans, and concepts. Some of it is wonderful, some of it is good, and some of it is bad. There is a pleasant-sounding vision statement in the document, we saw this earlier. But you're also given a vision map that represents a framework map for the future, but a map that even the planning board has trouble orienting. But it is a map that will shape the lives of those who live and work here. For some of us, the vision map is deeply disturbing and something of a nightmare. But we should be guided here by the city's mission statement, that Hendersonville is a mountain city where the government and citizens work together for a high quality of life, a high quality of life. And a goal has been stated often, that the city will prioritize the protection of existing neighborhoods when making growth decisions. But looking at the map, immediately, it confronts us with the loss of two historic workforce neighborhoods. One is the historic Faciforin Court neighborhood that the plan would describe as a placekeeper, with its unique remnants of the Faciforin school complex, has four remaining buildings, stone walls, posts, and structuring elements, streetscape design, and historic landscape. But this is a neighborhood that is home to a workforce, some of whom work at the nearby hospital. And then we discover, to some shock and outrage, that the neighborhood off 9th Avenue, between the hospital and the schools, and adjacent to the historic segregated black section of Oakdale Cemetery, a neighborhood that is home to so many remarkable people who trace their ancestry back to the beginnings of the city, this neighborhood would be wiped off the map, wiped off the map. However, the planning board, recognizing the community efforts to protect their neighborhood, recommended your review. Last night, I received a call from Dr. John Bryant, well-known to many of you as the former superintendent of Henderson County Schools. But he's now the director of Capital Projects' Party Hospital. He expressed strong assurance that Party is not seeking to expand its campus and not seeking to buy any properties. And indeed, he stated that the hospital instead seeks to help to preserve adjacent historic communities. He knows well both of the neighborhoods under the proposed designation. We should follow Dr. Bryant's prescription and help to preserve these historic communities, and perhaps remain mindful of the medical directive, do no harm. But then we shift from blue to orange on the vision map. Somewhat seriously shaken now in our faith and trust in this map, we see orange, a lot of orange. What is hidden there? What will happen to the neighborhoods in the orange section? Who will be at risk now? There are people in those neighborhoods who are uneasy about what is going on right now. The description and illustrations suggest an infill possibility of a little bit of anything and everything. But will we face more devastating rezonings and ongoing development by right nightmares that rupture neighborhoods and diminish, diminish the quality of life? Do you want me to continue? It's my time. I can come back.
Okay. If you would like to send us a copy of your remarks, we do read those.
Right. But there's more to say. If not, I'm going to come back next month.
Okay. Thank you. Bob Johnson.
How are you all doing? I'm a member of the Community Advisory Committee for Gen H. I moved to Henderson County 38 years ago from Charlotte. My kids all went to West Henderson High School. So I have a strong connection to the community. I had a career in, in construction and real estate development fields in Henderson and Buncombe Counties. And I currently live in downtown Hendersonville on 3rd Avenue at 216 Fleming Street. I wanted to point out three things. First, I've read all the pages of it, of the report, and I've been in the committee for a year, so I have a pretty good understanding of the plan and an involvement in it. What I saw, the number one issue was a concern about urban sprawl, basically taking away farm and forest lands and converting it into communities. And, and I thought that the plan addresses that very well. You saw in, in the land vacancy areas, that there's an awful lot of land in, in the city, obviously in the county, that that's not being used. For the most part, the utilities or the infrastructure is there. And this could prevent any more going into, in disturbing areas, that number one reason people, number one, are concerned, people don't want to go into that. Point is, we have, we have that already. And obviously, it can be done through some rezoning and some creative thinking about how to develop this, these facilities are, again, they're already there. Second, I want to talk about a metric, as you go through this and look through your approval, I want you to think of one thing, it's called a 15-minute rule. It's in the plan, but I just want to reemphasize it. The 15-minute rule has three aspects to it. The first is things that are within a 15-minute walk. The second is within a 15-minute bike ride. And the third is a 15-minute drive to essentially the city, the city center. And what that would do for us, if you think in those terms, I, I think the center, the most important thing in Hendersonville is our Main Street. I think anybody who comes to town, the business, looking to relocate businesses, looking to live here, they're going to spend some portion of their time on Main Street, and it's a true jewel. We kind of forget, because we live here and we're used to it, but it is an amazing place, and it needs to be vibrant. And the best way to keep it vibrant is to have people walk to it or be there. And if you get, concentrate some housing closer to it, more housing, more people will be there. The third thing, again, you already saw this, it's the, the five focus areas, I just want to talk about them again. The first was Acosta Trail, as you know, that's, that's amazing project. It's going gangbusters, we're already seeing effects from it. Second is Blue Ridge Mall, if you look in the plan, that's, that's a wild plan. You know, as you know, around the country, and even our Blue Ridge Mall, I remember when I moved here from Charlotte, I thought it was neat that I could go there, but it's, it's kind of a whale. And the plan shows a way to, not only that we could do here to redevelop that land, but also, this is being done all around, around the country. So that's one of our focus areas. You need to look at it carefully. The third is Spartanburg Highway. Again, where I live, I'm five minutes from five grocery stores. That's nuts. But Spartanburg Highway has got a lot of infrastructure there, and it's really close to, to these grocery stores and other things. So they're looking at trying to get some housing out there near Spartanburg Highway that would be walkable, which is kind of the goal across the board. The fourth thing is 7th Avenue, you all know about that, we're on the cusp of it, we certainly are anxious to see what's going to happen there. We, we see the construction, but that's going to have, I think, a great effect on, on the counties. So that's one of our focus areas. And the, the, the last thing is the, the downtown edge. And again, a perfect for infilling and supporting the foot traffic to, to Main Street. I want to end my thoughts about the town when I moved here. When I think of Hendersonville, I think of the movie, It's a Wonderful Life. I believe many towns hit a crossroad over time. When, when one decision can create a Pottersville or a Bedford Falls, so far Hendersonville has avoided the Pottersville and retain, and remains the, the Bedford Falls. So just want you to think about that, that what you do can keep the town as it was, a wonderful town, or could fall into the Pottersville. And, and I have seen Pottersville, they are really sad. And that does happen in some communities where the folks don't matter, don't mind, and also the, the council is concerned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Robert Thane.
Okay. All right. That's okay. All right. How about Steve Simpson? Okay.
Both of you guys went to Hendersonville. Now you're probably.
Don't be starting fights now. All right. Kyle Gilgus.
Well, good evening. My name is Kyle Gilgus. I live at 5301 Wood Duck Way on the east side. And first of all, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your service and sometimes sacrifice, but thank you very much. I've had both the honor and the privilege to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee. It's been a long time coming, almost a year, but it's been an exciting year. The plan before you is the result of many hours of listening, collating, analyzing, and consulting. And I do have to commend you. The development staff is incredible. They are wonderful to work with. This is not my first comprehensive plan, this is my third. However, the process was so innovative on this, that I was very, very impressed to be a part of it. The comprehensive plan was very comprehensive. The process to include our residents and visitors was innovative. The advertising campaign, the online survey, the drop-ins, the open houses, the public The advertising campaign, the online survey, the drop-ins, the open houses, the public hearings gave us invaluable information on the direction that our citizens want to see in Hendersonville toward 2045. The document under consideration identified 10 major areas to set our sights on. Within those areas are particular projects which are prioritized using several variables such as constituents, available funding, current zoning, and shovel-ready projects. No matter how we listen and plan, we must recognize that the comprehensive plan has to be a flexible document, a living document, if you will. And we've anticipated that in our compilation and taken into consideration for this body and for future councils. Regrettably, we do not have a crystal ball to see into the future. That being said, the Gen H Comprehensive Plan 2045 will be a guiding light composed of all the issues identified as importance to our residents and workforce. So with revisions, I ask you to, I encourage you to adopt the Gen H Comprehensive Plan 2045. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Fitch, would you like your water? Sandy Williams.
Hello. I'm Sandra Williams. I live at 309 Chadwick Avenue in Hendersonville. I just want to remind, I just wanted to comment on the plan being online. I went today, earlier today, to read it and it was very difficult to read. The print was small and very light. So I just wanted to make that comment. It could have been a little bit easier to read because it had a lot of good information. But after you read so much small print, you know, it's time to stop. Anyway, and I just want to remain, to remind the city council to beware of growth. If you want to see the results of growth that are not positive, all you need to do is go down 26th to Asheville. My husband and I went over there one day. I used to go, actually, I used to go there when I was younger and it was a pleasant place to go. You could walk the streets, you could shop. We went over and we couldn't find a parking place. There was a lot of traffic, a lot of tall buildings. We just turned around and left. So yes, growth can be a good thing, but it also, you have to be very careful because it can change things so that the way things were working, suddenly they don't work anymore. I'm concerned about the three and four-story buildings that could be built. You talk about people moving here because they want to live in Hendersonville. Single people live probably in buildings that are three and four-story buildings. They want to put one at the end of our street for senior citizens. And I just cautioned at that meeting that the entrances are going to be, the entrance is going to be on Chadwick, going in and going out. And there are going to be senior citizens pulling out of that where the traffic has increased immensely since the flood. Since it flooded down on that area, now people cut through there to avoid the traffic light and they race through and they race through and there's motorcycles. And I don't know, actually, in Hendersonville, if you're a family and you're going to move to Hendersonville, you're probably not going to live in a third or fourth-story building because you want to live where your children can play and where they can be, they can be safe and they'll be coming and going. And the one they're going to build at the end of our street, the entrance supposedly is going, can't be on Greenville Highway. It can't, won't be allowed. They're going to, the entrance and exit is going to be on Chadwick and there are going to be senior citizens pulling out on Chadwick. I wonder how safe that is. Just a few comments to the city council about what's going on in Hendersonville now. You want people to come here to live, to enjoy, and shop. Well, we were there for the Fourth of July and there's one whole block of empty stores. Nothing is there. There was a shop farther up that used to be an antique store. It was vacant for at least three or four years. Now there is a shop there now. People come to Hendersonville to walk down Main Street, enjoy the bears, eat lunch, and then they leave and they go back to South Carolina. They come here because the weather's nice. And I think there's some things you could do for Main Street. You need to, I don't know whether you need to get the rents lowered or what it is to encourage businesses on Main Street because they come and then they're gone. And what's happening is the breweries are moving in. Yes, people do drink wine and they do drink beer, but not like they do in California, I guess what I'm saying. A friend of mine told me that most of the local people don't drink downtown. They drink at home because it's safer for them. So see what you can do about encouraging businesses on Main Street because if there are no businesses because they can't afford the rent, people aren't going to walk Main Street. So let's see, what else? Oh, and the noise ordinance, where we live, it probably should be increased or at least be enforced. Motorcycles go down Main Street and they blare their engines and their music. And trucks go down Main Street and they roar and they play their music. I have nothing against motorcycles and I have nothing against trucks. I'm just saying that it takes away from downtown because of noise, because of the noise. And if you were to live downtown, you'd hear that at night. So let's see. So the noise ordinance.
If you could wind up, please.
Okay. I really like downtown. I mean, I grew up here and I was used to it. And of course, when I graduated, I left and now I'm back. But you really have to be careful about what you decide to do in the next few years as to what's here that's been here and has worked. And I thank you for letting me express my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Lynn Williams.
Good evening. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. I have no idea if this is going to fit five minutes, so I'm just going to kind of, I took notes while we were talking. So concerns, gentrification and displacement. That's a huge concern and I'm just not sure how this is being addressed in the comp plan. I think it needs to be specified and clear. You know, as market rate housing pushes out fixed income and low-income families, this is happening on every street corner. How is that going to be prevented? Let's see, was the flood map taken into consideration given that the county is now going to allow potentially for building in the flood plain? I asked that. I didn't get a clear answer. And if it was, I think maybe it's not yet. And then a concern was working with the Farmland Preservation Task Force and maybe partnering with Blue Ridge Community College with the apprenticeship program to sort of, you know, the upward road exits, there's farmland there. So if we could somehow convert those into sustainable and socially responsible businesses like Gaia, who's proposing to work with Blue Ridge for the apprenticeship program, that would be a great way to preserve the heritage in those areas. Let's see. The current plan doesn't list any ag land in the city, so considering allowing for urban farms and then protecting farmland in the EJT by working with the task force who's beating basically now. Let's see. The plan needs to be more in detail with areas that are niche and intricate detail, protecting the key historic features and the pocket areas of forest, green space, ag land, animal habitat, protecting from the current trend of deforestation, ridge top removal, clearcutting, loss of historic spaces in ag land. We have until 2030 is my understanding. That's what our current comp plan is. So I'm wondering if we can vote on this in December. Let's see. It would be great to work in collaboration with the county. I'm not seeing that. I saw that there was 744 views on the survey and 247 participants out of 17,000 people. That's not that many. We need more feedback from people in each individual neighborhood to specialize the plan. I'm not seeing heat maps suggested by previous speakers to prioritize green space and pocket parks. I'm not seeing a plan to preserve ag land in the annexation areas. I don't see the traffic plan for upward road, so we don't really know how to address that. I'm not seeing protection for the quality of life and people, for people in historically disadvantaged areas or things like pastoral quality. I'm not seeing the projections of the flood plain due to the county laxing. With 4,000 units approved for 17,000 people, that's a 25,000, sorry, a 25% increase in just a number of years at that rate of growth. It's too fast. We also saw with some of the rollout of the capital projects, it created economic challenges for the businesses on Seventh Avenue and placed a $10 million debt burden on the citizens for the parking deck. So how are we going to learn from this and apply this forward when we're implementing things? Or will it be business as usual? You know, I think three-story buildings need to be thoughtfully placed and four-story need to be the rare exception. If you look at the current relationship to the comp plan, the key environmental goals are delegated to reasons listed for the denial but are often not prioritized and therefore fall by the wayside when projects are approved. My concern is that some of the key goals like historic preservation, preservation of community character, support of the county's soon-to-be-updated 2010 comp agricultural plan are ignored for the care of development, even if those projects only serve people moving in from out of town that can afford them and displaces the current historical residents, both human and wildlife. The goals and implemented projects are not a guarantee that this current body will even prioritize the environment. So that is a concern of mine. If this hearing is truly for the purpose of taking the public's feedback into account, show us how the plan will change. Listen to the citizens. Extend the time for feedback to include the voice of the citizens. In November's election, will this plan be updated before the next vote? I'm hearing it's a tight turnaround. What is the rush? Why can't we take our time? Currently, only the mayor has been elected by the people. Two members are sitting here that have been appointed without the residents' votes and the two other members have been grandfathered in and not been rightfully elected for the term between November 23 and 24. Can we wait till November? Show us you respect the voice and the rights and the vote of the Hendersonville and EJT residents. We are looking for cooperation, not opposition. We seek to continue to collaborate on this plan. The height limit was placed, I'll try to wrap it up here. The height limit was placed by the state legislature for a reason. Respect the character and historic quality of the small-town vibe and be thoughtful about building heights. This is very important. Please continue to protect ridgelines that have been historically protected and it's critical that we honor what generations before us have built. As eighth generation, I take it very seriously what happens to this historic fertile valley. We can look ahead to 20 years. We also need to look ahead to the next seven generations. What will be here? Will we leave a more beautiful place than the one we've inherited? Or will we continue to clearcut and destroy this sacred land and this unique bio-region of natural splendor, protective climate, and rich soil? Why is the term "climate change" or "climate refugee" not even mentioned once in the plan? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ginny Faust.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here. I am so impressed with this plan. I would like to express my appreciation and admiration to everyone involved in making this happen. And it seems to me it has been a real team effort, the work to incorporate as much public input as possible from a wide variety of people, all the meetings that took place to get organized before it even began, all the meetings behind the scene, such work to be inclusive. The city administration, Lou Holloway, Matt Manley especially, shepherded the process. I'm just really impressed. I should have said that I live at 727 Florida Avenue and I was the city planner from 1985 until 1991. And my late husband, Roger Briggs, was the planner from 1993 until he retired in 2005. And I know he would be very impressed with this plan as well, as he was a landscape architect and so he was very concerned about design. And I'm just thinking of all the graphics and the pictures and the thought that is going into design for the future of our city. I also want to thank all the city staff involved in the public meetings. Everyone was very patient and helpful all through the process. I want to thank Allison Justice for all of her work to keep everyone informed and I was very glad a printed copy of the plan was available at the library. I'm also extremely impressed with the hard work of all the consultants. I found the plan organized, very well organized, easy to read with great graphics. I'm especially impressed with Chapter Six. The project priority list is a real roadmap to move forward. And I want to tell you all, when I was a planner in, at Chapel Hill in the master's program, and I had to read a bunch of plans as part of one of my courses, implementation was really not part of the process and I'm so glad to see that in this plan. So I would like to encourage the city to think carefully about the effect of infill development on the people living and working adjacent to proposed construction sites. I did send a memo in the spring to city staff and the consultants regarding my personal experience with the project that is directly behind me and with several specific issues that my neighbors and I have experienced. And I hope that these issues could be considered during the process for the Unified Development Ordinance, if that moves forward. And now I would like to bring up something that really is not directly related to the plan, but in this construction process behind me, I experienced something very positive that I was not expecting. And that was the personal relationship that I developed with the construction workers. And I was not expecting this to happen, but I have been interested in construction since I was a child. And so to have something so interesting going on directly in my backyard, beginning with the sidewalks. So I got to know the sidewalk crew because they're right on the same level. They're not up in the, in the sky doing the framing. And it was a real joy to visit the site every day, which I continue to do as much as possible until the work moved indoors recently. And I do speak some Spanish and so I got to talk to the guys as the various crews went through their work. And I hope that as the city looks at more construction in the future, that there is some consideration given to how to include neighbors, nearby residents, children in watching what's happening, getting to meet some of the workers, have it explained, this is why we're doing what we're doing, when we're doing it. We need to be thinking about how to have more connections with the people around us and especially with children watching this happen. So I know my time has expired, but it was a gift that I was not expecting when this started. And I am grateful that I was able to experience it. I wanted you all to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Sherri Silvius.
I am Sherri Silvius. I live at 246 Mountain Sunset Trail. I am one of the people that live on the outskirts, not in the city, but come here daily. The Gen H plan definitely has been a massive and strategic plan. And it's interesting to hear from somebody who has been a planner before. It does seem to be a very well-done with a lot of good ideas.
I live at 246 Mountain Sunset Trail. I am one of the people that live on the outskirts, not in the city, but come here daily. The Gen H plan definitely has been a massive and strategic plan, and it's interesting to hear from somebody who has been a planner before. It does seem to be a very well-done with a lot of good ideas and as some of the people here have said, some ideas that people are not happy with. I had a couple of questions, a lot of it is monetary, on how all these things are going to be paid for. And with the infrastructures, such as what people brought up about medical and how far out because of not having enough, whether it's hospitals or medical care and even in the infrastructure of schools. The implementation projects, there were 18 areas and six being the higher priority. I was curious if the people in these six areas, even though you've had wonderful outreaches or tried to bring people in and community involvement, have all of these areas, people been personally reached out to, like the surrounding neighbors, like, you know, you know, door outreaches? In the abundant housing choices, you, there's comments that you speak about reinventing code enforcement to improve dilapidated properties in an equitable manner. What exactly does equitable manner mean? I think it's honorable to help people who are limited in resources, so I like that aspect of, of doing that, but there's also, as other people have said, areas where people probably can be pushed out, and I don't find that to be proper either. It says, within the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan, there's a housing trust fund that works with institutional partners using development standards. Who are the institutional partners? And do these partners have a political bent, or is there certain expectations with how the money is used? You know, one of the areas is in the Green Meadows area to develop a community land trust to protect and develop affordable housing. The plan also speaks about developing a city land bank. Who is the city land bank? To clear dilapidated properties and promote redevelopment. It says about creating an organization to acquire, stabilize, improve, and resell unsafe and abandoned properties. Who is this organization and where do you elicit the people for these, for this program? The plan speaks about supporting development, proposals that mix subsidized housing with market-rate housing and encouraging mixed income and market-rate development to boost affordable housing. In these areas, is this what people want? And this is what I'm talking about with outreach to these communities. The plan speaks of healthy and accessible natural environment in the floodplains, and some of that has been brought up as well. When you fix these type of floodplains and allow housing, what type of housing are you going to be putting in these areas? The plan seeks, speaks about seeking federal and state grants to fund floodplain property buyouts, to expand the flood storage capacity and increase for green space. But at what cost? What cost is it going to take to do this? We know with more infrastructure, we'll reroute water and could actually increase the floodplains. There was an example for the Colorado, Lyons, Colorado area, and yeah, I think there was, anyway, 30% of the land was reused, but I didn't think that was a good example. The last thing is the downtown opportunity fund. What is the downtown opportunity fund and who has access to this? I think that's wonderful that you, that you are providing funds, but where exactly are these funds and who's able to have access to them? I thank you for your time, and I do appreciate all the work that has been put into this because it has been a huge project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sylviaus. Chris Darnells. If you could give your address, please.
Sure. Hi, my name is Chris Darnells. I live at 1540 Kensington Road in town. I work at Party Hospital. I've got kids at Bruce Drysdale and at the middle school here in town. I'm here to speak in favor of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. For the past year, I've been a member of the Community Advisory Committee for the comp plan, so it has been a lengthy process. It may seem rushed because it's such a large document, but for us on the committee, it does feel like a lengthy process. Many hours of meetings, briefings from city staff, briefings from the, from the consultants throughout the process. So I guess I'll try to keep it brief and to the point. Number one, my first point is just I want to assure you that this process has been thorough and very well thought out. The staff and the consultants have done a tremendous amount of, I'm sure you can tell from the document, research, demographic research, market research, analysis. Most importantly, they have done a tremendous amount of community engagement, you know, online, in-person, hearing people's vision, you know, actual community members for what they want for our city. So I guess my first point is that I've seen the whole process, and I would assure you this is an excellent plan, and I would urge you to adopt it. The second point I wanted to make is actually that I think the more important part is after adoption. The implementation, because so often these plans get written and there's so much time and energy that goes into the plan, and it looks great and it sounds great and the pictures look great, and then it sits on a shelf. You know, this, that didn't necessarily happen with the entirety of the 2009 plan, but there's certainly tons of recommendations from the 2009 plan that never happened. There was a 2017 bike plan, it was never really implemented. We've just had a, you know, pedestrian plan, like to see where that goes. We're going to have an affordable housing strategy and a plan for that. We've got lots of plans, but what are we actually doing to implement those plans? And I would recognize that that's the hardest part. For you, the hardest part is implementation. So you don't have an easy job. I recognize that. You know, people have basically said, in terms of their priorities, they want affordable housing, they want to maintain the character of basically two areas, the town and our open land, meaning our farms and forests. And they want access to safe walking, safe biking, safe greenways. You know, there's lots of other input, but overarching, those seem to be the three main That stuff is not going to happen unless the plan actually gets implemented. You know, part of the process, they walked us through different scenarios and different maps. What happens if we continue with our current strategy, our, our, our current codes, current zoning? And if you go through that scenario, we sprawl. We take up farmland, we take up forests, we take up bridge tops, growth spreads into the county. It's not walkable, it's not bikeable, it's more traffic, and it doesn't match our stated goals of what people want. If you look at the next scenario of maybe tweaking some of what we do, it's a little bit better, not as much sprawl, but there's still sprawl. There's still a lot of traffic building up on small rural roads because there's, you know, developments going up. And then if you look at the scenario that the plan actually recommends and you play that out over time, that's where it, what the map looks like actually matches what people say they want, which is high quality of life, livable, more affordable, and not sprawl. Keeping farmland, keeping our open green spaces. I think what it comes down to is that growth is going to happen. Whether you like it, whether you don't, people are going to move here. Y'all know this, I know this, you can't stop it. So we have to manage it. And so the best way I think you can manage it is to take the recommendations from the plan and put it into the Universal Development Ordinance, the zoning. You have to codify the recommendations from the plan, and unless that happens, it's really going to sit on a shelf. So thank you for your time. I appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you, Mr. Darnells. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Anyone else on, online that might be?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will close this public hearing and say thank you to everyone who took their time to be here, especially our committee members who came and told us what, what a great job our consultants and staff have done. We do appreciate that. Many, many hours fitting in around the rest of the things that they had to do. So this, this is something that we will take into consideration, staff will, will look at and get back to us.
Madam Mayor, just a couple, just a couple of comments, if I may. One thing related to Mr. Fitch's comments, just related to, I want to talk a little bit, just mention about the institutional area along Sixth Avenue or Highway 64 and Ninth Avenue in that area. I will say that that institutional area was, is, if I understand it correctly, Lou, the land development plan, the institutional area is the same area that we had previously in, in the previous plan.
Very similar.
Very similar.
So just, it's very similar. There are, there are differences, but the particular area along Oak and in that area is also shown as institutional in our current plan. So that was a, a component that was existing in our current comprehensive plan.
And I'll say this, just sit tight there a minute, Lou, so you can correct anything I get wrong. I just want to say that we heard that comment from the planning boards and out of respect, we went and met with the hospital yesterday to get their vision. I will confirm what Ken said, that the hospital has no intention of acquiring property in that historic area of Oak and Ninth Avenue, the area particularly the, our historically African-American neighborhood there, so there's no intention, even the hospital told us, even had folks approach the hospital and the hospital said no, that they're not interested at this time, or not interested. So their focus is much more along redevelopment, along Fleming and 25.
I'm sorry, I have a question. You said folks had approached the hospital, like developers or?
Property owners.
Oh.
Property owners.
Sorry.
Property owners from, from within the neighborhood. So, no, from within the neighborhood. So I think the hospital is, is very aware, just want to dispel any thoughts that there's an ongoing effort to acquire that residential area. Had some conversations about, the council did want to adjust the map, that the council could do that and could direct staff to do that. So we had a good conversation with the hospital about this. I want to be clear on behalf of the hospital, and we expressed the concern that we had heard from the city council about protecting that area to them. And I will say this for the public, I will say that the council is reviewing the plan and we're having one-on-one meetings with the staff, so I want the public to know that the council is going page by page to, in a meeting with our staff to provide their comments that will ultimately end up in the final draft with, that we receive next, at the end of the month. So I just want to make those comments, so.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment on to anything?
Are we doing any sort of discussion tonight or are we just making?
I don't know that was really planned or discussion.
Okay. Well, I'll just.
If you want to have a comment you want.
I'll make a couple of general comments. The first one is, I think in our, you know, our opportunities, I think we have a huge opportunity to talk more about how we're going to attract, like if people are moving here, how are we going to attract young people and families here? Because that's important for everyone's quality of life that lives here. We need folks that are going to be in the workforce or else we don't have a quality of life for anyone. So I think there's several different areas where we can weave that in, especially when we're talking about, you know, expanding innovation, creating creative hubs, expanding the entrepreneurial market, those type of things. The other thing is the tree canopy assessment and making sure that it's all in the document because we did just do one of those, and I know it's already in the plan. I think the overarching thing from what we've heard in the public hearing is that there are several things and concerns that people have mentioned that are in the priority list, some of which that are in the short priority lists of projects that will address some of the concerns, including developing an urban forestry plan and also like a vacant property registry for downtown because there are a lot of vacant properties in downtown. As someone who is currently looking for a place for a business, it is extremely difficult to find something that is affordable. And then the other ones were the Public Land Trust, the City Land Bank, those will help with affordable housing as well. So I think there's a lot in the plan, it's hard to read the whole thing. I could show you all the sticky notes I have on mine, it's quite a rainbow of comments, but we are all reading it and meeting with staff and going with a fine-tooth comb. So there is a lot of effort that is being put in on this plan, and thank you to everybody that's on the committee, that you stuck with us for that whole year, I know it was a lot. And thank you to everybody that came out of the public hearing. I was happy that we had so many people sign up.
I just want to thank everybody, like the staff and the consultants. The community outreaches have been amazing. I mean, I don't know how we could have, like, possibly done better. Everybody worked so hard, and I know the staff has, like, been out on the streets, like, working, and so we have gotten a lot of input on this plan, and it has been put into this huge document, and, you know, we are daily studying ourselves and we're just, I just, I'm really grateful that we have such a team that has been so engaged and helpful, and I know the staff has put in a lot of time, and thank you. I hope we make you proud when we finally make this adoption and get everything right, and, you know, we're all trying as well, so thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. More to come next month. All right. New business, discussion regarding valet parking on Main Street.
Mayor, vote, members of city council. I'll start this off, but I hope my staff's good, is still here if you have any specific questions. But city council received a request from the folks at the main event and also Mr. Rivera regarding potentially establishing valet parking on Main Street. We have, at this point, not done any work, but we know there is, you received that request and wanted to put it on the table for the city council to get direction. Is that something you want staff to do? I will say, and I'll ask Jamie Carpenter, our downtown manager, to correct anything I get wrong, I think the downtown advisory committee looked at it a little bit about a year ago. And, and chose not to take any action, one way or the other. But at this point, just want to get the feel for the city council if this is something you want us to, we'll be glad to do some work, look at some proposed ordinances and, and then put it through a process where it will come back up through the downtown advisory committee with a recommendation to the city council. So before we started that process, just wanted, from a prioritization standpoint, wanted to hear from council about if that's your desire for us to do that.
Do we know why the downtown board didn't want to pursue it last year? Sorry, Jamie.
It was in August of last year, and so it was only about six months into parking in general, and so we had not wanted, or they had not wanted to go into any further changes at that time, and so that's what the minutes had, had said from that, is just no further action at this time.
Okay. I mean, can't hurt to look at. I don't know what something like that would look like, but it could be a valuable service, just to see.
I have a different way of looking at it. Rather than staff doing all the research, and I challenge you to go out and find where it's working and come back and show. it's working and come back and show staff what it is, so they don't have to start from scratch on this thing. Obviously, you've seen it.
It's my pleasure.
And I would much rather put the onus on somebody that's wanting to develop it, rather than dump it on staff to come in and do something they haven't been doing. So, that's my two cents. I'm totally open to listening to it, but I don't want our staff to have to develop it and then it not fit. You know, there's gotta be places it's worked, or it hasn't worked. And I put it on you, is my two cents. Open to listen to the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm supportive of it in general. I think if we have a way to have a good, clean policy and it's fair and reasonable for everybody downtown, but I think it could be potentially a great way for businesses to, you know, bring customers in and just have some more ease for people to come downtown. We do have an aging community here, and valet is definitely an easy way to get access to downtown, and so I would love to hear what we can come up with.
I'm not opposed to considering it. Any thoughts?
I'm not opposed to it, but I would like for the gentleman and city staff to work together on this. And like I said, come back with some concrete evidence.
Absolutely.
How it's gonna affect the revenue base, how it's gonna be potentially used by just not only our senior citizens, but everyone.
Linda, I just want them to come in and then staff, obviously, review it, but I just don't want to bog down stuff that he already knows about.
That's what I'm saying, they work together. He'd come back, he'd bring his-
When they come back.
Yeah, when he comes back and they bring it together on it, and then we can go from there. We need to see, we need to have facts, we want to see the nuts and bolts. Mr. Henderson.
I don't think we need a formal motion, I think you've heard the general feelings of-
Yeah, we have clear direction, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we're giving other people homework? This is great.
Okay, we have another item of new business, this is letter I from the consent agenda regarding the Bearcat and Church Street sewer project.
Mayor Volks, members of the city council, I asked our communications team to turn, pull up a map, snap, yeah. So, this particular item is the approval of a change order number three for our Bearcat and Church Street sewer replacement project. What you have here is the project, we installed 1,200 linear feet of sewer main replacement. It was along Church Street and new sewer on Bearcat, which allowed us to abandon an existing sewer main under the Henderson High School football. So, if you look at the map there, you see right in the middle of the, you see the high school there with this new construction, and to its right is a sewer main that runs basically under the edge of the football field. This picture was taken prior to the installation of the new turf field, or maybe even during the turf field, but the field is there, the line is a historical line, it has, it is PVC, so it has been replaced, but it is a sewer line carrying public sewer across private property, the high school property, and under the artificial turf, which is now new. We did have concerns regarding if there was a sewer failure, that we would have to damage the turf to remove it. So, city staff put it together, a project where we relocated that sewer down Bearcat, and then it travels north down to Five Points intersection at the top of the map there. So, a new sewer line along Bearcat and along Church Street. As part of the high school project, I will say that the sewer line along Oakland, all that sewer used to previously go under the old high school, but it has been completely relocated under various phases there. So, you see that, the cost of the total project for relocating under the football field and soccer field down Bearcat, down Church Street is $723,359 there. So, we're asking, that would be the total project there. You have a resolution in your packet as well as the draft change order number three.
You know what, I asked to have this removed, just because I was curious, my business has obviously been affected on Bearcat Boulevard by the construction, and then, once I found out how bad the line was underneath the high school, I guess my question is, so, this was an, okay. How much did the whole project, was this originally figured into the renovation of the high school?
It was, it was not. Our team and our public service director and water and sewer director are on their way back from Charlotte from a legal mediation today, or they would be having this discussion. So, originally, the sewer line came down Ninth Avenue, if I remember correctly, Council of Hendersonville, the sewer line came down Ninth Avenue and crossed the high school property and then connected into the sewer line that ran along the football field and soccer field. That was the original track of the line, and I think you see a dashed line there as part of the high school project. Our staff initially worked with Henderson County, because obviously that is not a good design to have a sewer line under a building carrying public sewer, it's not ideal. And we had concerns regarding not only failure of the sewer line, but structural failure as it relates to the building. So, our city staff worked with the designers and engineers as part of the high school project and was able to find a way, I don't know if you see, down at the corner of Bearcat, Bearcat and Oakland, the green line cuts diagonally across the high school property. In order to make the project, to make the project work, our staff worked with the county designers to come out with a solution where you could move the line. There was some concern that we weren't gonna be able to move it, but our staff provided a recommendation suggesting to cut the corner because of the fall of the land, we were able to basically bypass the High Point area at the intersection and come across, and then we ran that line down to the existing line at the football field. And so, that was done as part of the high school project. I'll give credit to the county for, once we were able to identify that, they did include that in their construction project. But then the city knew that in the long-term interest of the football field and the property and the public sewer would be to extend the sewer down Bearcat and down Church Street to remove all public sewer from the high school site, totally. So, the only thing that is on the high school site now that is public is that slight diagonal line, which we now have all the proper easements across that to keep the flow moving. So, it is collecting all this public sewer up Ninth Avenue and from the hospital area and everything now, which previously ran across the high school property, now runs along a public street, through a small easement, and then back into a public street, which is how we like for our sewer system to be designed and operated.
Do we routinely make sewer improvements on private property?
Typically, what we like to do is only when it is to the ultimate benefit of the city, we will remove it. But typically, we do not do work on private property.
Did we have to get, like, I don't know, legal permission to do that over or under their property, like where their-
Oh, we did, we did obtain an easement along the corner there, which we do not believe that the previous sewer line had, had across property, because it would have been done when it was a city school system, and so we do have easements now crossing that property.
This is just another example, just cut to the chase, of the city working with the county to help them execute a very important improvement for the whole community. And I think we did the right thing, proud of it, and I'm glad we brought it up, so everybody can understand that this was 100% an effort by the city of Hendersonville to help the public schools and the county in general. It's good stuff.
You want to make a motion?
I'm gonna hear.
You got it?
You have.
You read it.
Got it. All right. I move city council to adopt a resolution by the city of Hendersonville of authorization for the city manager and/or authorized representative to approve change order number three for the construction of the Bearcat Boulevard and Church Street sewer replacement project.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the authorization for change order three, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, motion passes, and the change order has been approved. Okay, thank you. We've got, it was good discussion. Thank you for bringing that up. Boards and commissions, and committees, we have just a few appointments that we need to take care of. Okay, so the first is the LGCCA, on the right page here. Okay, yeah, I was getting to my-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure I've got the right thing here. Okay. So, you would like to make a nomination?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Melinda Lawrence to serve on the LGCCA.
Okay, Melinda Lawrence has been nominated to serve on the LGCCA. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Melinda Lawrence to serve on the LGCCA, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Let's have it.
Can we make her chairman? Can we make her chairman?
Are you trying to block me over there?
Yeah. You just got voluntold.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have the Animal Services Advisory Committee, Business Advisory Committee, and planning. Are there nominations for the Animal Services Advisory Committee?
So, mayor Volks, I think all we're doing here, GL, you correct me if I'm wrong, is we're adjusting terms here as it relates to, I want to read this correctly, should have been given a renewal, so we're asking for Catherine Lible and Robin Granger to receive a three-year term ending June 2027, both for those of those folks. Dallin Jackson Vaklowski, also a three-year term of June 2027. Holly Newton, a three-year term ending June of 2027. Beth Scarborough would have a two-year term ending June 2026, and Patricia Shepherd would have a one-year term ending in June of 2025. So, all we're doing is adjusting the terms for folks that have previously served. So, you, this was brought to our attention by our chairperson, Ms. Caroline Gunther, that there was some confusion last month about which terms these folks would see. So, all we're asking is to clarify the terms.
Daniel, do we have to read all of these, or can we just say as presented? Ah, made you talk.
Personally, I think I'm comfortable with saying as presented, I think that's fine.
Super duper.
Is it, I mean, is it, I mean, you just read them all out. Yeah. I think that's fine.
Madam Mayor, I move that city council appoint members to the Animal Services Advisory Committee as presented.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the appointments and reappointments to the terms specified, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, she carries, and that's been clarified. Thank you. Next, Business Advisory Committee.
Mayor Volks, members of the city council, you need to make three appointments, Chris Cormier, who's in the audience, Jamie Justice must be reappointed since they were appointed by their boards, Cam Boyd would like to be reappointed, but you may pick someone else if you want. So, Mr. Cormier was appointed, I believe, by the Chamber of Commerce-
Yes.
And Jamie Justice by the Partnership for Economic Development. And then you will make one appointment yourself from the list below, but Cam Boyd does desire to be reappointed.
But essentially, they're all reappointments.
Yes.
You chose Cam Boyd, right?
Yes. I'd say do the first two-
Separately.
Separately. Sure.
Madam Mayor, I move the city council appoint the following people to the advisory, Business Advisory Committee, Chris Cormier to a three-year term ending in 2027, and Jamie Justice to a three-year term ending in 2027, June.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the two appointments, just read, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries, and we have those appointments formalized. Okay, now we have one more slot to either reappoint or appoint a new individual. Someone like to make a nomination?
I move that city council reappoint Cam Boyd to the Business Advisory Committee.
Cam Boyd has been nominated for the Business Advisory Committee, are there further nominations? Those in favor of Cam Boyd for appointment, to the reappointment to the Business Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it, and he is appointed. Planning Board, we have vacancies here.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to first give an introduction to Robert, Bob Johnson, who spoke to us earlier. He had in touch on his incredible military career in the United States Army, many deployments, lots of important jobs with the Pentagon. And the thing, the most important thing to me that he took on was, a few years back, Arlington was in disarray. They had crossed up a lot of graves and the markers, and it was a big mess. And Robert was assigned to come in there and fix it, and he did more than just fix it. He set an example for our military cemeteries to be handled all over the world, basically. And I'm real proud to know him and to have been friends with him, he's a great example of a real leader. And I think we're really lucky to have him back in the city, he and his wife. So, with that being said, because he would never tell you that, and there's a lot more about it. But, I move the city council appoint Robert Johnson to fill an unexpired term, his term will end December 2025. At that time, he is eligible to apply for a full three-year term if he wishes to.
Okay, you've heard the nomination, is there any discussion? Not those in favor of appointing Robert Johnson to fill an unexpired term, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. As have it, and we appreciate your willingness to serve. Since you spoke up for Mr. Johnson, I'll speak up for Kyle Gilchrist. She mentioned that she had been involved with several plans, and that's because she was an elected official on the county condition back in Illinois, so she knows planning. So, someone would like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council appoint Kyle Gilchrist to fill an unexpired term, her term will end December 2025. At that time, she's eligible to apply for a full three-year term if she wishes to.
Okay, heard the motion, is there any discussion? Those in favor of appointing Kyle Gilchrist to fill an expired term, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. As have it, we have our other appointee, and we appreciate their willingness to serve. Planning Board is not an easy task-
And coming right off the-
But it is very important. All right, city manager report.
Mayor Volks, members of the city council, just a couple of things, two administrative things that are in your agenda for your review at your leisure. things that are in your agenda for, um, your review at, at your leisure are June 2024 contingency and adjustment report is included for your information, as well as, um, surplus item report, um, for the past month. I will say, our intern, um, Mr. Olson is, uh, busy surplusing, uh, computer and IT equipment. I, I bet I've approved five different reports. You can clearly see, uh, he's keeping me busy getting it done. So, he's, he's earning his intern money this summer. So, um, getting those items cleaned up. Um, and then, um, item of congratulations and appreciation for council member, um, Melinda Lawrence, um, by local legislation, um, approved in the last, uh, three weeks. She is now, um, appointed, uh, as a city council member through, um, November of, uh, 2026, to, to complete the term of Ms. Roundtree. She does not have to go through a special election, um, or a special, um, um, special election is coming fall. So, would like to congratulate Ms. Lawrence in that, and that will appreciate her service.
Thank you. Uh, council members, anything you would like to bring up?
I apologize, because I meant to send an email to everyone before we got to the meeting about this, but since we're here. Um, earlier in the meeting, we did a moment of silence for Crystal Colly. She was, um, crucial in getting the birdhouses installed in Sullivan Park. And ESB would like to dedicate one or all of the birdhouses in Sullivan Park to Crystal. Um, if the city council would also like for us to do that. I think that would be a wonderful way for us to honor the work that she did on that project. I even think that ESB said that they would take it out of their budget to get the placards.
Just, I'm looking strange, because we have a conversation about Historic Preservation Commission, too, interested in that. It, that, I think it's a great idea. We'll, I, we'll do it.
Everybody wants to do it. It's such a great idea.
Yeah, I think.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. Uh, we do have a closed session this evening. Someone would like to make that motion?
Madam Mayor, I remember that city council enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A1 and 6. To prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter 132 of the general statutes, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness of an individual public officer or employee.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of entering closed session, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. As have it.